All right, now I'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. This is the regular meeting for Thursday, December 5, 2024. It is 1:01 PM. We will begin with a flag salute, and I will ask our newest council member, Council Member Eve Fromberg Edelstein, to lead us in the salute to the flag.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Eve, would the city clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein.
Here.
Councilmember Malato.
Present.
Councilmember O'Keefe.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wile.
Here.
Mayor Downs.
I am here. It is now time for non-agenda public comments. This is your opportunity to speak to items that are not on the agenda today. Please do your best to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Please forgive me if the three minutes rolls around, and I ask you to conclude your comments and return to your seats, and I will ask the city clerk to please handle non-agenda public comments today.
Thank you. First, we have Monica Bradley and David Kowalsick.
Welcome, Monica and David. Glad to see you here today.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Downs, council members, city staff, and esteemed guests. I'm Monica Bradley, owner of House Apoki. I'm a proud member of Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce Board. Before we dive into business update, before we dive into our business updates, I wanted to extend a warm welcome to our newly appointed council member and friend of mine, Eve Fromberg Edelstein. On behalf of the Chamber Board of Directors, we congratulate you on your new role and look forward to collaborating with you. Our first update is our community gift card. We want to express our sincere gratitude and excitement for the successful launch of the community gift card. It's fantastic tool. It's a fantastic tool for our local economy, and we appreciate the collaboration with Gabe and the marketing team. So, thank you, thank you for bringing that to the City of Rancho Mirage. Our second update is, we recently had our business expo. That actually attracted over 600 attendees and showcased nearly 100 local businesses. This event has solidified its position as the largest and one of its kind in Coachella Valley. So, thank you for that support as well. House Apoki at the moment is really thriving. It's enjoying all the, all the help from the businesses around, all the help from the city. I do have to say that as a member of the city, as well as a business owner, I am really proud to be a part of this community. So, thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Monica. Good afternoon, Mayor Downs, council members, city staff, and guests. I'm David Kowalsick, representing Eisenhower Health and a fellow board member of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm excited today to share a couple of updates. I'm honored to have been elected secretary to the Chamber's Executive Committee for 2025. Eisenhower Health is committed to supporting our local business community. Also, the 2024/2025 Shop Local Guide is now available. This invaluable resource reaches over 17,000 households and promotes local businesses across various sectors. It's a powerful tool to drive local spending and support our community's economic vitality. Now for an update from Eisenhower Health. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for your overwhelming support of Eisenhower each and every day. We continue to see strong volumes in both inpatient and outpatient care settings, and now have approximately 100 outpatient clinics across the valley. Our main focus always remains on delivering high-quality care and safety. Patient safety is the foundation of everything we do. Recently, we announced that Eisenhower again achieved an A grade in LeapFrog's Holiday Safety Survey. Eisenhower earned the only A grade in the Coachella Valley. Additionally, we recently earned a five-star rating from U.S. News and World Report. We were the number-one ranked hospital in the inland empire and ranked the number-19th hospital in the entire state of California, which we're very proud of, given the quality of healthcare institutions across the state. I'm also happy to announce that we're approaching our 4,000th newborn birth since opening our birthing center. Our cardiovascular capital campaign is going great, and we've already raised $184 million of the $259 million needed for this campaign. Construction is underway for the first building, and again, we sincerely thank the City of Rancho Mirage for their donation to this campaign. Additionally, we have recently expanded our cancer center by 12,000 square feet and our behavioral health center by an additional 5,000 square feet. Today, Eisenhower's future is bright and strong. With five-star quality, we have exceeded $1.2 billion in net revenue, more than 1.1 million annual visits, and almost 5,000 employees, making us the largest private employer in the valley. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a very safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Monica. Always happy to hear from the, from chamber members. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Kristi?
Susan Ragsdale.
Happy holidays, everyone. I'm very pleased to see you on the council. That's exciting to have a new member. Welcome to Rancho Mirage. Anyway, I grew up believing or being told that persistence pays, and that's why I'm still here, and I want to wish you all a very happy holiday season. I wrote this for today. A generous heart reveals the Christmas spirit. Christmas is a powerful time for spiritual reflection. It's an opportunity to take stock of what's important and become better versions of ourselves through benevolence, generosity, and humility. For me, every day is Christmas. This is the spirit expressed in all my sacred artworks. In 2011, I established a Facebook page to inspire the public towards love, joy, and peace. For a decade, I relished this fulfilling mission in selfless service. As I built a following of 11,000, however, in 2021, Facebook began demanding payments, so I stopped posting. At the same time, due to being perpetually victimized by eight tenant bullies and the criminal property manager, I stopped creating artwork, cooking, and eating well. Self-defense took over my life, and I became ill. Based on cold-blooded slander and libel, the Housing Authority unjustly portrayed me as wicked and threatening, worthy of eviction from public housing. I have suffered enormously under the protracted emotional violence. My life has been destroyed by the immoral city of Rancho Mirage. I'm begging you, my representatives, the City Council, to restore me to what is rightfully mine. My case is airtight completely and proves the crimes of gross negligence and fraud. I am 100% innocent, and I'm unable to lie. I could never have anticipated such a shocking and disgraceful thing happening to me. My 73rd birthday is December 18th. Due to being victimized in these ruthless crimes since May 2022, I've been estranged from my family. The greatest blessing would be to spend the holidays with them, you know? Otherwise, on January 15th, I'm facing homelessness again, and the City of Rancho Mirage is absolutely unaccountably responsible for this not very good situation.
Susan, please wrap up your comments.
It's three minutes. Okay, so I'll just stop, and I have a packet for everyone, but I haven't finished collating it and also the case to look at.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Wally Melendez?
I hope everybody's doing okay. In 1636 Harvard, and before that it was called Boston College, but then it became Harvard or something like that. So, this is in Boston, and the students, the first students had to know Greek, Latin, and Hebrew before they went to their college. And, and they were teaching them to be people of the cloth. Well, nowadays, it's so different, and now people have to know about climate change, global warming, renewable energy, vehicle exhausts, economics, accounting, business, But Rancho Mirage, like I was saying before, needs to teach some university courses. It's very necessary to conserve the earth that is being destroyed, if not by bombs from Putin, from billionaires that want to rape the land for oil and coal and so on. So, nowadays, we have to be very careful of what we do. We have to be very responsible. Putin is trying to destroy Europe over there because he's, he's, he's worse than a narcissist like Trump, worse. He's a mass murderer. And I just want to leave some words for you that's all over the news. Trump says, first day, I want to be a dictator. Well, I got this for Trump. First day impeachment.
Next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hi, my name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the City of Rancho Mirage, and this is one of my foster dogs I had about six years ago. They do come back to me. That's a sad thing, but he's going to visit his family, which has an sister living right now, so, in Palm Desert. So, I wanted to stop by and just let, I guess, the general public know that I have submitted written comments for today's meeting, since I will be able to stay, and thank you very much. Bye-bye.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
Thank you, Kristi. Normally, we would go to council comments. We're going to dispense with those today because we'll have plenty of time to talk as we move through the agenda today. And typically, on a day like today, we would not have business on the agenda. We would move right to the ceremonial part of our meeting, which is the, the changeover of Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. But we do have an item that is particularly important to me and to the members of this council today that is on the agenda. And so, we will now move to public hearings, the first item, the only public hearing that we have today. The subject of it is crossings at Peterson Road, environmental assessment case number EA 24-0008, and preliminary development plan case number PDP 24-0003. To deliver this staff report is senior planner, Pilar Lopez. Pilar, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Downs, and good afternoon, City Council. I have for your consideration the crossings on Peterson Road, a proposed veteran affordable housing development presented by Blue Companies. The project site is located on Peterson Road, designated high-density residential with an affordable housing overlay. Previously a mobile home community, the now vacant site borders the Whitewater River Channel. A 300-foot building setback is required by the Coachella Valley Water District influencing the site layout. The site was identified as Housing Element Inventory Site D under the city's six-cycle housing element. The city entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Blue Companies on October 5, 2023, followed by a disposition and development agreement on December 21, 2023. The project prioritizes affordable housing for income-eligible families with a specific focus on households headed by military veterans. With this, with this project's entitlement, we would have 41% of our arena entitled and 78% planned and in-progress projects. This rendering presents an eastern viewpoint, offering a perspective on how the buildings will integrate into the surrounding environment. The crossings on Peterson Road is a thoughtfully planned development featuring 116 affordable housing units comprised of 16 one- and two-story buildings. The development offers a range of amenities, including a pool, a lounge deck, grilling and dining areas, a grass sports field, a shaded totlot, a community garden, shaded seating areas, creating a community-oriented environment that accommodates various household sizes. To reduce visual impact on neighboring properties, carports and taller buildings are centralized, ensuring both privacy and convenience. The project accessed by Peterson Road provides 271 parking spaces with 144 carport spaces and 127 uncovered spaces. The architectural design positions one-story buildings along the front and side property lines, with buildings one and four as one-story structures with a maximum height of 16 feet. The taller two-story buildings, reaching a maximum height of 26 feet, are centralized to preserve neighborhood scale and privacy while minimizing visual impact. The Mediterranean style features warm earth tones, stucco walls, tiled roofs, and overhanging eaves. This rendering of the community building highlights its Mediterranean-style design and its role as a focal point for resident amenities. The landscape features over 60,000 square feet of drought-tolerant and native plants combining sustainability with aesthetic appeal. Shared amenities include a community and sensory garden, shaded seating, a sports field, a pool, a lounge deck, a totlot, and various barbecue areas. Each unit also features private outdoor space with patios or balconies ranging from 62 to 100 square feet. As part of the project consideration, the developer is requesting a deferral of all city development impact fees. This request, if granted, will greatly improve the project's ability to obtain funding. If the developer secures the necessary financing from non-city funding sources such as state and/or federal tax credit programs, then the city, the city development impact fee deferral loan agreement will be prepared and executed within a 55-year term. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project, which studied various environmental categories. With the implementation of the project mitigation measures for biological resources, geological resources, and cultural and tribal cultural resources, the project's environmental impacts will be less insignificant. Public hearing notices were sent out on November 20, 2024. To date, we've received one public comment in opposition, and it has been distributed to the council. No additional comments have been received. Staff recommends that the City Council make the action as shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions the council may have. I would now like to invite John Bigley up to the podium with Blue Companies. Thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for your time today and making room for us on a very important day and other businesses you have following this. I thought I would talk a little bit about Blue Companies. Pilar, great job on the presentation, and Mina, thank you for your guidance and direction through this whole process. It's been very helpful. Is this the click? Did that work? All right, Blue Companies, we were previously known as urban housing communities and just recently rebranded as we are going through some growth within our company, and we thought we would better align ourselves with really what our mission is. We are a mission-driven company, and what that means is, we take that into consideration when we're designing the site, and we take, and what that means is, we look at all the stakeholders, and the stakeholders being you, stakeholders being the neighbors, stakeholders being the tenants that are going to live there. We think that's very important. As was mentioned, this is workforce housing with a priority for veterans, and when we go to design the buildings and the units, we take it from the tenant perspective and how it's going to live. When we do the layout of the community, we take it from this perspective of how it's going to live within the community and from the tenant perspective as well. So, a way of example, you know, we try and put the, you know, laundry facilities next to the play areas, because when we do that, when parents come down to do their laundry and they have their kids with them, it's easy, easy for them to watch the kids while they're doing the laundry. We try and create nice, open areas where people can come together and congregate, have barbecues, picnics, stuff of that nature. From the community at large, we want to make sure that it's not overbearing, over-density. We have plenty of parking, so it doesn't spill out into the broader neighborhood. We take into consideration the architecture features in the area and try and bring that into the development as well, so it lives nicely within the community. So, that's when we talk about mission-driven, aside from our focus on affordable housing, it also goes into how we design the units, the buildings, and the layout of the, of the So, recent developments, we did Veterans Village of Cathedral City. That opened up about a year and a half, two years ago. This is different in that this is, you have to be a veteran in order to live there, and homeless veterans. We've got great relationships with the VA, and they have onsite case management, two case management, case manager workers onsite. We also have social services onsite to help these veterans. Again, in this one, this isn't designed for homeless veterans. This is designed for working veterans that meet the income qualifications. We probably will work with the VA and see if they're interested in providing some VAS vouchers for the veterans that both helps the property, but it also helps the VA and gives them some subsidies in order to help, you know, provide services if they need to for the veterans that would be living there. Crisis in Palm Desert is under construction right now. It should be done September, October of next year, and this is an example of, we work with like a lot of local groups, and this one, we're working with the YMCA to provide services for the residents that will live there. It's a workforce housing, one, two, three bedrooms, and that's kind of that. Leasing operations, we third-party our property management. On this one, we targeted higher property management to do the onsite property management. We will have a property manager onsite, you know, living there, you know, to, to look over and manage the process. We will also, as I mentioned before, work with local groups to bring services onsite to help the community, help the kids, help, you know, families that they need some job training, resume writing, stuff of that nature. You know, as they get in and we start doing some surveys, then we can really kind of determine what type of service programs we really need. That kind of goes into what I just spoke about in terms of services and kind of how we manage the project. Managing the project, a lot of people say, you know, what do you have? They control the kids and stuff of that nature. That kind of goes with the services, because, you know, we were all kids one day, and we all kind of left unattended, and, and after school, you know, you, you do things that maybe you shouldn't have done, but if you can work with services and keep them occupied and find what they're interested in, that really helps the community come together to live better, both for the tenant perspective and the community at large. So, that's pretty much what I have, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
John, thanks so much for being with us today. We appreciate it. Does any, do any of my council members have, council colleagues have any questions? Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kids getting in trouble after, after school, we were all looking at each other. So, clearly, clearly, we were charter members of that group.
Sure.
I, I just want to, more of a comment than a question. I, I'd like to thank you and your team for the wonderful cooperation and effort that you put into this project. This is very dear to my heart, and so pleased that it's coming to fruition.
Thank you.
It's going to create such a tremendous, a resolve to tremendous need that's out there, and I can't thank you enough for all that you've done.
You're quite welcome. Thank you very much for the comment. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, obviously, this appeals to me not only as a city official, but as a veteran. And being a veteran, I realize that it's not exclusively for veterans, but there is an emphasis appealing to veterans, and so, that's important, and I'm delighted that you're doing that. I realize it might not be staffed exactly the way you have it in Cathedral City, but on the other hand, I hope that there's enough of an interest from, from the VA to assist you in getting veterans as far as occupancy is concerned.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I think there is, we work very closely with Karen Baer at the VA for Cathedral City, and she was like, you know, let us know what else you're working on, because we'd like to be a part of it. And I had mentioned this develop, you know, potential development, and she said, you know, the difference between that one and this one, right? That one is, for the veterans, is pretty much 30% AMI and below, and most of them, most of those veterans unfortunately are below. This one, you know, goes up beyond that. So, those veterans unfortunately, you know, most of them either have very low-paying jobs or they're not working, and we're trying to get them to the point where they are. Where these veterans are just like, you know, you and I, but they, they've served our country, and they're just, you know, workforce, they're part of your workforce, right? And they just need a good place to live. And so, Karen said, hey, we want to be a part of that. Let us know as you guys move through the process, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll get a number, you know, kind of their sweet spot is if you can get at least 25 veterans, then they get enough service dollars from those VAS vouchers in which they could dedicate somebody to come by and help them with, you know, job training and stuff of that nature or educational classes and stuff of that. So, yeah, there's a big interest in that. So, thank you very much for your comments.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you, John. Thanks so much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thanks for working with our staff on this important project for our city. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Okay, we will go to public comments, and I'll ask the city clerk to handle public comments on this item.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this item? No speakers.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Council comments. Now, we've already had a couple, but any more that anyone else would like to say? Eve?
Well, it's very interesting. I've been reading recently about women's healthcare for female veterans, and that always makes me think deeper, and it really also speaks to a family that a veteran is taken care of and raising, and I think more about this housing for the, from the perspective of the children of those veterans and how it's going to change their lives, and that's, you know, a pebble in the water and the ripples go out. So, the multiple generations that will benefit from this housing, and maybe those children will come to the service of our country as well because they've been treated so well by their city. So, I'm really excited to see what this is in 20 years, 30 years, 50 years, so, great project.
Thanks, Eve. Michael? Thanks, Michael. So, this is really an important project for us, and I'm very delighted that, that it's on this agenda today. So, affordable housing has been something that this council has attacked hard this past year, and Pilar, remind me of the percentage, but I think of our income-restricted affordable housing number assigned by the HCD. This gets us, the, the projects that we've approved so far this year get us to what? About 70% of our, of our goal?
78%.
78% of our goal. And so, I'm delighted that, that this item is on the agenda today on my last day as, as mayor of this city. I'm very, very happy that we're able to address this item today. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'd be happy to make the motion that the City Council, A, adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, approving and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and mitigated negative and mitigated negative declaration, S E H, number 20224090575, for the proposed project based on environmental assessment case, number EA24-0008, and B, adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order approving preliminary development plan, case number PDP24-003, and C, adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order approving city development impact fee deferral in support of Blue Companies LLC.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Kristi. We will now move to our action calendar and the first item on our action calendar is Agenda Item Number Two. The subject of this agenda item is the results of the November 5, 2024 general municipal election. And to deliver this staff report is city clerk Kristi Ramos. Kristi?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you know, a general municipal election was conducted on November 5, 2024 for the purpose of electing two officers to serve as Rancho Mirage City Council members for four-year terms. All aspects of the election were conducted in the time, form, and manner as provided by law. Riverside County registrar voters canvassed the returns of the election and provided certified results. Out of 13,480 registered voters, 11,932 ballots were cast for an 88.52% voter turnout. Votes for the two full-term seats are as follows. Michael O'Keefe received 4,992 votes. Ted Wile received 4,698 votes. Wayne Abrashow received 2,947 votes. Gregory Goodman received 2,934 votes. And Nate Lewis received 2,508 votes. The California Elections Code requires that the city elections official certify the election results to the governing body via adoption of a resolution reciting the facts of election. Official election results are attached to the resolution. Upon adoption of the resolution before you, Michael O'Keefe and Ted Wile will each take the required oath of office and receive a certificate of election. That concludes my report. Would you like me to take public comments at this time?
Please do.
Okay. I actually didn't receive any comment cards, any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? No speakers. Please step to the podium and state your name.
Thank you. I'm Wally Melendez. Just for the public record, what I'm hearing is that three other people received votes of 2,000 and something. Why don't they take, why don't the highest of those three take the seat of the lady over here? That's a question.
Thank you, Wally. Appreciate your question. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Kristi. Time for council comments on the election. And I guess it's appropriate if we hear from Ted and Michael first, if you wish to make comments.
Michael?
Plenty of other things to say as the day wears on here, Michael.
Then I'll pass right now.
Okay, all right. Ted?
I just want to say that we're delighted with the results of the election. I want to congratulate Michael. I think he ran a splendid campaign. I was honored to have him campaign with me. I believe that it demonstrated the satisfaction that our electorate has as it relates to the city, which is a compliment frankly, not only to the two candidates that we're running, but to the entire staff that made it all possible. So again, I'm most appreciative and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. I've got a couple of things I do want to say. So first, congratulations. Congratulations to the people of the city of Rancho Mirage. So in the county of Riverside, the voter turnout this election was about 70%. 69.9 was the number that I looked at on the election website today. But it was a little different in the city of Rancho Mirage. In the city of Rancho Mirage, the voter turnout wasn't 70%. It was between 85 and 90% in every precinct except one. Only one precinct didn't have between an 85 and a 90% turnout. That precinct had a 93% voter turnout. So the people in the city of Rancho Mirage turned out in droves for this election. And the precinct that had the 93% turnout is Mira Vista and Del Webb. And we have a couple of council members who live in Del Webb who sit on this podium today. In your precinct, there was a 93% voter turnout. So there was a tremendous voter participation in this election and the people of the city of Rancho Mirage are to be congratulated for that turnout. And I want to congratulate Ted and Michael on their wins. So Ted, this is the fourth time that you have been elected to this council by the people of the city of Rancho Mirage. So the people in this city continue to recognize you as a leader of this city and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well deserved. So yes, there were five candidates in this past election for two seats. And so yes, it is the case that three of those candidates were not elected. But it is also the case that the two who were elected, in Ted's case, he won 60% more votes than the third-place finisher. This was a landslide in any pollster's estimation. In Michael's case, this is the first time he was elected to the city council and he was elected by a wide margin. He was the top vote getter in this election. He got 70% more votes than the person who finished in third place and he ended up with the second highest vote total ever won by a candidate for city council in the history of the city of Rancho Mirage. So this was a tremendous turnout and a tremendous margin of victory. The voters have clearly spoken and Ted and Michael are clearly the voters' choice. Congratulations to the two of you. And I am delighted that I'll be sitting at this podium with the two of you for at least the next two years. Okay, it's time to move on to the next item here, which is council adopts the resolution. So I guess I need a resolution. I think it might be appropriate if somebody other than Ted and Michael make the resolution. Lynn, would you like to do it?
I'd like my first resolution to be this resolution.
Please do.
So I'd like to propose the resolution adopting Resolution Number 2024, next in order, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Kristi. And now I think it is time for the city clerk to invite Ted and Michael down into the well to take the oath of office.
Yes, please join me down in the front. Okay, so if you can both, if you want to stand, cut, there you go, and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Guys, why don't you take one in the center too? You're going to have those photos for a while. Maybe with the city logo right? Get in the center. Yeah. Ted, you're about to be mayor. We expect you to know we're the center of the chamber. Okay, now you have an opportunity to speak as a sworn-in member of this council. So Michael, you have something you'd like to say?
I can speak now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City has had a great year this year. We made significant progress regarding affordable housing, workforce housing, public safety, public works. And we made a commitment to focus on economic development and of course, improving cell phone reception as soon as we get the studies finished by the end of this month. And we have maintained a healthy fiscal position. So as all of you know, Rancho Mirage is a successful, well-run, and beautiful city. And that's why we cherish our famous quality of life and the standard of living that makes us one of the best small cities in the country. I personally have had an extraordinary year this year, one that I never would have imagined possible and certainly one I will never forget. Since I was sworn in last year, I have always tried to approach the public and city issues with a positive attitude. I've tried to carry that through with my campaign this past season and I'm grateful and I'm humbled by the generosity and the support of all of you who helped me. My promise to you is the same as that pledge that I made last year. I will always place the interests of the city of Rancho Mirage above any other personal agenda. I will always honor my fiduciary duty to you and I will not break the public trust that you have placed in me. And my hope for my new colleague, Councilmember Eve Fromberg-Ettlestein, is that your first year is as enjoyable and informative as mine has been. And I am ready and happy to help you if you ever need it. I'd like to give a special thanks to the city staff who've helped me so much during this first year in office. City Manager Isaiah Hagerman, Assistant City Manager Ryan Stendal, and all of the directors and their staffs who've been more than generous with me, giving me their time and their expertise. It's an incredible team and that's what makes our city so special. So once again, I want to say to all of you, thank you from the bottom of my heart for your trust in me and your belief that I'm deserving of this position. It's an honor and a privilege and a big responsibility and I take it very seriously. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you had mentioned earlier that this is the fourth time that I have been elected to what I consider this cherished position. I feel as enthused today as I did the very first time that I was elected to take a seat on this dais. It is a privilege and a responsibility that I indeed cherish greatly. And I'm so proud to represent the city of Rancho Mirage. We are a unique city and the electorate has demonstrated by electing us to represent them. And what they're saying is thank you for preserving our quality of life. And that's our job here. Our job is to continue to maintain that quality that represents a dignity, a style, and a panache that's second to none. As I say, I feel as enthused today as I did the very first time that I took this dais. And I can't emphasize enough that we on the council get an awful lot of credit for the success of our city, but so much of it is due to our staff. And the staff are the people that make it work. The staff are the people that implement all of the things that we pass. And so to Isaiah and everyone else, indeed, we are only as good as you make us look. And so I cannot say enough thank yous to you for the work that you do because we carry out basically and implement what you do every single day. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm honored to be here. I'm also honored to continue to work with you and our staff and it's a great privilege. And thank you very much for basically introducing me today again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Eve, Lynn?
I'll put my comments later.
Well, the last comment, couple of comments that I have is that Ted and Michael were clearly the people's choice. They were, they were certainly my choice. I endorsed them and I campaigned for them and I am delighted that they won. And as I said a few moments ago, I very much look forward to serving at least the next two years on this dais with Ted Wile and with Michael O'Keefe. Okay, we now move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Before we get to the staff report on Agenda Item Number Three, I'd like to talk a few minutes about my time in this seat as mayor of this city. So it's been an honor to serve all of you in this city. Now, it certainly is the case that those of us who sit on this dais, we make decisions and we set policy, but it's the staff that carries out those decisions and that policy that we set. So in one respect, our job is the easy part. The hard and heavy lifting goes to the staff. So I really want to say thank you to the work that the staff has done over the past year during my term as mayor. So thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Kofi. Thank you, Isaiah. Thank you to Colin. Thank you to Ryan. Thank you, Mina. And thank you to Kristi. Thank you to everyone here in this building. Thank you to all of you at the library and observatory. Thank you to everybody out at the Public Works yard for making me look good. I appreciate all the work that all of you do. And I want to say a very big thank you to my colleagues that I have served with for the past year or two. Lynn, thank you so much. Ted, thank you. Michael, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your support. And for just the past week or two now, thank you to Eve. I appreciate that. I know that you're going to do a great job on this, on this city council. But I really want to say a special thanks to the three of you for being my special support team here in this city all over the past year. It's been a great deal to me and I really appreciate that very much. And thank you so much for, from all of the voters of this city for electing me a couple of years ago. I really appreciate your faith in me and I hope that I've done a fairly good job as your mayor. I'd like to think that I did okay. So hope for the future. I think that our best days are ahead in the city of Rancho Mirage. We're a city of about 18,000 people. When we are fully built out, one of these days, we probably will be no more than about 25,000 people in this city. So that in itself, that's a fairly decent growth, 7,000 people in a city of 18,000 today. But it is the case that even at 25,000 people, we will be a relatively small city. And we need to continue to work to keep the character and the charm of Rancho Mirage as a wonderful place to live. We'll continue to entitle thoughtful and well-planned development, as we talked about today with the Blue Companies here, for the affordable housing project that we approved today. We will continue to provide great public safety for the city of Rancho Mirage. We'll continue to build on a reputation for good governance and for fiscal responsibility. We'll continue to provide for public safety with first-in-class public safety in terms of our law enforcement team, some of whom are here today in terms of Carol Fire and our EMT team. So we're going to stay the course on fiscal responsibility in this city in the years to come. I'm confident that we now have a city council that knows how to work positively and productively together to build the best possible future for our city. And I'm encouraged and enthused about our future. And I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and go to work with my fellow council members, with Ted as the mayor and with Lynn as mayor pro tem for the next year. So thank you all for working so diligently with me for the past year. I appreciate all of your hard work. All right, we will now go to Agenda Item Number Three and the title of this agenda item is Appointment of the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. And to deliver the staff-
No, Mayor, you could table this item as the mayor.
I guess I could. I guess I could. I guess I could. I could find a way to... I could adjourn this meeting right now if I chose to.
You still have the power.
All right. So, let's see. Where am I? So, the subject of this staff report is Appointment of the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, and to deliver the staff report is City Clerk Kristi Ramos. Kristi?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, in accordance with the Rancho Mirage City Charter, at the meeting at which new councilmembers are installed during election years, the city council shall appoint one councilmember to serve as mayor and one councilmember to serve as mayor pro tem. Prior to these appointments being made, councilmembers shall each be identified by the length of time they have continuously served on the city council without having served as mayor. The new mayor shall be the councilmember with the longest term of consecutive service without having served as mayor. The mayor pro tem shall be the councilmember who, to the greatest extent possible, appears to be the person most likely to meet the eligibility requirements to succeed the newly appointed mayor. Based on service records, Ted Wile is due to serve as mayor, and Lynn Mulatto is due to serve as mayor pro tem. That concludes my report. Would you like me to handle any public comments?
Please do.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? No speakers.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Let's do this.
So, we... The council has a gift for you, Mayor.
Okay.
So, current mayor pro tem, Wile, and you are going to go down front.
Yes, if you'll join me, if you may.
I'm going to hold this while you guys talk.
Mayor, I could spend the rest of the day talking about you. And I mean that. I can vouch for... I've been on this council now 12 years, almost going on 13. I've had the privilege of working with a number of mayors. And frankly, you have done an exceptional job. You have represented the city with dignity, intelligence, and fairness. You have been so supportive of your colleagues throughout your term, and I just cannot say enough good things about you. You've been a fabulous example of what mayors should be like. And I look forward to, frankly, sitting in your chair and hope that I can do as good a job as you have done during the past year, because I think you have set the bar extremely high, and I cannot thank you enough and say congratulations to you.
Am I in the middle?
Yes. Hold on one second. We'll go.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jerry, would you come up for photo with me? Here, maybe we'll put this maybe in the middle. What's that? Oh, you look... You look way... You look way better than me.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Ted, thank you very, very much for those kind words. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I've been... I've had the best mayor pro tem to work with over the past year as well, and so Ted is going to do a fabulous job as mayor of this city for the upcoming year. Okay, where are we? Did we?
We just need a motion and a vote.
Okay. So, how about if I make the motion today that the city council appoint Ted Wile to serve as mayor and Lynn Mulatto to serve as mayor pro tem for the upcoming year? May I have a second?
I'm happy to second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, what's next? Are we... Do you have them back down in the well to take the oaths?
That's correct.
Back down.
Could I say a few words?
Sure.
About you, Mr. Downs?
Oh, I appreciate that. Sure. Thank you, Michael.
I mean, I prepared this.
Please do.
I would just like to tell everyone that I've told him many times before, but I'd like to say again that there's no one more eloquent than you. For this past year, I've learned so much from you, not only about style and persuasive speaking and writing, but also about the policy and the issues that we've addressed. You are a natural leader with a clear and direct point of view. You're not afraid to express it. Everyone knows where you stand and where we stand with you. You are the one who emphasizes the core values of our city: strong city management, rigorous fiscal controls, prioritizing public safety, excellent planning, superior public works and infrastructure, and providing generous amenities and services to our residents. You've told me that a million times. You're committed to those values, and so am I. And I want to thank you for your kindness and your generosity and your friendship to me this past year and for your leadership. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. That means a great deal. I appreciate that very, very much. Okay, oath of office.
And one more time for you. If you can raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations. Do you want to go take a formal wish?
Okay. An old familiar seat. We'll start. And I will ask the mayor pro tem if she has any comments that she would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was elected to the city council in 2023, and I wish to thank the residents of Rancho Mirage for entrusting me to sit at this seat with this fabulous, dedicated body that I have the opportunity to work with on a daily basis. And I'm reminded daily of the honor and privilege it is to serve this city. You've heard some of the comments before, but it bears to be repeated that this is a very special place, the city of Rancho Mirage. And it's through the thoughtful and measured decisions of past city councils and this current city council that we have this wonderful quality of life. I'm also reminded the great privilege it is to work with these wonderful councilmembers, and I look forward to working with Eve Fromberg-Ettlestein. She's a wonderful addition to our council. She brings a tremendous knowledge as an attorney, but mostly as a citizen and just a fabulous human being, a longtime resident of the desert. So, she understands the desert very, very well, and it's going to be a benefit to us. I am amazed, but not surprised, at the brilliant talent, all the young professionals that we have the opportunity to work with here at the city. They work hard for our businesses, our residents, to create and maintain the quality of life for all. The city council, as it was said earlier, makes policy, but it's the dedicated staff, including our public safety, that represents us so brilliantly, and we are so grateful to you every day, that make this city shine. I am humbled and most grateful to all of you, my colleagues. This is an extension of family, if you will, and also my daytime family, the Brady Sandall Group. I'm a realtor during the day. Who, they're here, and they put up with me. Don't laugh, Daniel. They are very tolerant. They're very supportive, and I so appreciate your generosity to allow me to represent my city. I look forward to serving as mayor pro tem this next year, and we look forward to another successful year of accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And I'll make a few additional comments that, first of all, I feel privileged to have Lynn Mulatto as my mayor pro tem, and look forward to working with her for the next year. I've enjoyed our relationship in the past, and she is a dedicated, committed individual who is always thinking about what is best for the city. And not only that, she's just such a considerate person. She's thoughtful. She's well-meaning. And one of these days, she's going to make a great grandmother. I am sure of that. You can tell the way that she interfaces with people. Her kindness transcends her actions all the time, and she's just terrific. I've mentioned before that having worked with Mayor Downs has been a privilege. And mayor, again, I continue to look forward to our relationship going forward for a number of years. You have been an inspiration, as Michael O'Keefe said. You're an eloquent spokesperson. There's one thing about Mayor Downs that I admire and respect. I respect this with individuals, but particularly with this individual. At no time, if you've ever been dealing with Mayor Downs, have you walked away and said, "I wonder what he meant by that." There was never a doubt when he presented a position that you knew how he felt. There was never an ounce of equivocation. And so, with that, I, again, thank you with great admiration and respect. Likewise, Michael, it's been a pleasure working with you, not only as a colleague, but also during this campaign. This was your first campaign. I remember talking to you about it. Michael would ask me various things, and I said, "You know, politics at times, Michael, can be a nasty business." And he later has reminded me that, you know, you underplayed that a little bit. But more importantly, he came through with flying colors, did it with a smile on his face, and achieved great success. And so, I look forward to working with you during the coming year. And Eve, congratulations. I look forward to working with you as well. I look forward to getting to know you. I know that you will be making wonderful contributions in a very short time. I sense not only your abilities, but I think the depth of your understanding of people and the city is going to be just a wonderful complement to what we have going here. And so, I know that your contribution will be immense and look forward to working with you. And once again, I lastly, without naming every single person on the staff, I just cannot thank all of you enough, because you are the people that make us look good. We're the ones out in front. We're the ones that get our picture taken. We're the ones that sit in Starbucks when people come up and say, "Boy, what a great job you're doing." And thank you for your service. And I do, and I say, "Thank you. It's been a privilege." But basically, their compliment to me is a compliment to you. They're complimenting the job that you do every single day, and the benefit endures to us. So, again, Isaiah and the entire staff, I thank you so very much for making us look far better than we deserve. And again, I am honored to be in this position as mayor and privileged to lead our wonderful city for continued growth and prosperity. Thank you very much. I think so. I think that we probably have talked ourselves out.
I have one more thing I'd like to say, if I may.
Yes, please, Mayor.
So, I think what we do here today, I think this represents one of the strengths of this city: the fact that we do this mayoral rotation. It takes away a political element. It takes away some stress and some strife on this council. I didn't have to worry about somebody, someone who might run against me for mayor. I knew what was going to happen. The minute that I took the oath of office last year, I knew that this day was coming and that Ted would become the mayor of this city. And Ted, just as Ted knows, that a year from today, Lynn will become mayor of this city. This helps us work together in a stronger and better way. So, I appreciate that there are some folks during the last election, as an example, who suggested that probably this city would be better off if we elect the mayor. Speaking as the mayor who just stepped down from that seat, I reject that idea. I think this is the best way to handle the mayor of the city of Rancho Mirage.
And I agree with you, Mayor. And one other thing I'd like to say in conclusion: that all of us that are sitting here today, and particularly in the mayor's position, there have been some wonderful shoes that have been on this dais preceding us, that have set the foundation that we have inherited. We are privileged to be in a city that is so stable and solid, but it didn't come in a day or a year. It came over a period of years, and we had some great, great leaders that preceded us. I could name all of the mayors that I've had the privilege of working with. I would name every single one of them, but the foundation- I would name every single one of them, but the foundation has been incredible. We've inherited that foundation, and I hope that we can carry on, frankly, with the spirit of success that has transcended us. So, once again, I thank you. I thank you for your kind words. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.[1794.96][1794.96][applause]